Ain't no wonder we're probably select. October third, two thousand twenty four, and we're broadcasting there's only hustling. Please rise from the bridge.
I definitely guess to the. Of the. To the power of just saying one nation, my God, into this world. The delivery. For all. Eighteen seventy.
Yeah. Uh, I.
Will Roland Taps, Marie Brilliant.
Here.
And Callahan.
You.
Lang Holmes.
Here.
That next.
Present.
All present, everybody's here.
Great, thank you. All right, board and community reports and updates. Update from the mid coast council government. Matthew, as the executive director. Not me sure. Hold on, just a second, okay. Evening.
Hi.
What's it doing technology business? Seven seconds.
Did you get much warmer but faster?
Don't make eye contact. Hey.
There it is.
Who do you think it is? And I am Matthew, I am the executive director for the coast council governments, and it was kind of interesting, I was driving over here. And one of the things that I thought about was that. Topson, it's important to remember you folks were founding member of the original organization that led to the coast council government. And I know because I was there. Um, and that was back in the early nineties, and I was actually working for the city of Bath, and the three communities got together and began the. From that approach of topson economic development organization, and that slowly evolved into a planning organization. Into your head and ultimately into the council government. New Coast Council of Governments is strategic, or is this statutorily created organization? Um, that can be found in state government as. In its description is connecting communities to state agencies, federal programs. Development programs and other aspects that help our municipalities. So in a sense, we're supposed to be a conduit. Between the state agencies, the state systems and you, and we try to do the best. U S communities are our clients, and that's how we look at our regional planning organizations, how we look at our region. Um, and I'm going to go through a bit of what we do. Um, and then show you some examples of what we've been doing in topsom, and then just open it up for questions. Um, the slide in front of you is a strategic plan. Um, I encourage anybody in the audience as well as here to visit our website. Um, and. Uh, big coast dot com, I had to look at it to remind myself. Um, and you'll find a lot of really good information material, a lot of really good story maps and data about the region. Um, about housing, about transportation, about employment, about movement, about. Sustainability issues, climate change, high water issues, and a lot of information that we publish, including training seminars and like. Um, what we have in front of you is the five or seven goals of our strategic plan. Um, focusing on a sense of place of excellence, state and federal funding, we are an organization that works really hard to both. Identify funding sources and make sure that communities are aware of what's out there and to help communities on individual projects, think through. Capital stacks and and funding opportunities that you may need or have to complete a project. Um, we work in sustainability and resiliency realm. Um, we're working really hard to improve our communication. And we're working in a digital, uh, diversity and equity platform that focuses on getting more and more. Both populations involved in the work that we do. Um, we. Well, um. We get our money from a variety of resources. Um, but the dues, your dues are the most important base resource that allows us to match and. Uh, collect other resources from other federal agencies. Our biggest federal agency is E D A, and we have a regular training grant from them, but we get money from. Uh, the. The state through the comprehensive planning program, through C D B G assistance, order of border assistance. And we cobbled together other programs and transportation programs as we move forward. Um, it's important to remember that your dues are paid for by the county. Um, so we we go to the county annually, make our presentation to them, let them know what we're doing in the county and and. Uh, so far, at least in my three years, they go through. Um, we work in a variety of different areas, um, and we provide assistance to communities. In technical assistance program that we have, we offer sixteen hours of free service and time to every community. Um, and and we encourage communities to use that if there's a way that we can help them, a small project. Or answering questions or doing presentations, um, we're more than glad to do that. Um, we do a lot of municipal land use planning. And in a sense, you know, you have a professional staff here, we're here to help them, you know, we can, we can be. A backup to them, we can take on a project that they don't have time for, as we have with sustainability group. Um, but we're really here to help you and answer any kind of land use questions, I will tell you. That you are providing us guidance and helping understand form based codes. Um, because you're really the first community that has stepped forward, and I think the program that you put forward. I can understand, so I'm, I'm, I think it's really good for the community as well. Um, we do economic and community development, planning, implementation, we have a specialty in tax agreement financing. And we have loan service program that we provide to small businesses. Um, we identify and look for grants to assist small businesses when we ever, ever we can, but for the most part, we we. Provide a supporting loan for small businesses, usually take a second or third, it's a small piece. But it's usually an identified gap that somebody can't fill. Um, we do community resiliency, uh, planning. Um, we do a lot of state, regional and sub regional coordination, we are part of the main association of regional councils. And as that, as such, we try to bring issues that are important to the community, true directly to the state agencies that are our country. We're doing transportation planning, Mark participated in the kickoff of a thing we call thriving communities, which is a federal award that we received. To develop the region's first transportation plan in quite a while. Um, and we participate in state's housing opportunity program, both in terms of. Providing a really important analysis in. Uh, housing and housing development, I'll talk a little bit about that later. Um, but I I think we also helped a lot of communities with L D two thousand three and origin changes that were associated. Projects of interest, um, the housing opportunity program, um. I I threw up a slide here, but you can get onto our website, what we've done is identified the gaps in housing across all income groups. So that we need to fill to meet our needs, and the analysis includes what we need now and what we're projecting for the next five years. Um, and it takes into consideration, um, both multifamily housing, rental housing and ownership housing. And we can go with more detail about that, but, um, the gaps analysis led us to establish three working groups in our region. Um, and the working group that we're working with, um, in our region has. Both it's called Five Rivers Housing Group, and it's been focusing on employment needs, um, we conducted an employer survey. When we put back in early spring, late winter, which we interviewed, uh, through a series of questions. Forty-five employers from here up into Knox County area. And, you know, you see some of the answers, um. Regarding employers or what they were concerned about housing. Um, I thought some of the things that we heard more that really concerned us, if you think about. The continuum of housing and the services we provide is that. You know, the average travel time for most workers is forty-five minutes in our region. You know, B I W draws from all sixteen counties. Um, with that kind of distance that people are traveling, traveling, they're using all our transportation systems. It's why you see the peak periods you do, I don't want ninety-six, is why we see it in several other, what we call pinch points throughout the region. Um, but, you know, there's very much concern by employers about affordable housing, about the types of housing that their workers have. We know that, you know, we hear from our medical, uh. Facilities and particularly Mid Coast Hospital and Pen Bay Hospital. That they not only can't find housing for orderlies and nurses, they can't find for doctors either, that the housing market has gotten that difficult to compete with. Um, we are, we are working on the thriving communities, uh, transportation planning program. Um, and this, what we did is we applied for federal imposal. Um, and we're selected, um, as one of fifty-two. Uh, receivers of this service, uh, three hundred applications in the country. And what we talked to them was about the fact that we really lack lack to regional plan. Um, that our transportation planning process was complicated between large employers, rural communities, peninsulas. Um, and a tourist economy that tends to choke it up in the summer and requires that we think about ways to get around. Um, we have, we're probably one of the more diverse. Um, travel, um, or regions and state. Um, because we have both ferry and road and air and rail, and we have active working airports in several areas, so it's. It's a, um. It's a complicated transportation system. When we talked to them about what we thought was important, um, what we were seeing was the displacement of our local workers, particularly the co- closer you get to the coast. The more likely that workers were having to move in leave and find housing that they could afford. Traffic congestion that came with that, housing shortage, generally the affordability shortage generally, this this region has gone. From, from an area that. Ten or fifteen years ago was reasonably affordable to not being able to let off for the median income wage worker. Um, we also have a lack of workers, all of our employers looking for more employees. You know, B I W would like to grow a thousand employees, medical service is talking about needing three to four hundred, all our small businesses. Most of our tourist operations are at operating at some levels, they're not open for the times that they could be, there's opportunity costs being lost. Um, we're also a gateway region and and, um, as the most recent storms have suggested, we we've identified climate change as a real issue. Um, another area that we've worked on, and in fact, an organization that I chaired and Matt participated in, um, was the Rail Use Advisory Council, R U A C. And I, I actually only knew it by R U A C, so I had to look it up, remember what it's called. Um, and that was that was established, um, by the commissioner's transportation office. To do an analysis of the lower road from Brunswick up to Augusta, and the map for you is the area that we study. And, um, the recommendation that went to the commissioner that will be presented to the legislature. This winter is to convert that lower road to an interim trail. Um, and that we recommend that the commissioner work with the mirror meeting, trail board supervisors, individual towns. Um, and identify potential trail segments and also identify areas where motorized use. And most recently, I've heard about concern for forces, so we need to be able to figure out how to address that, but we do have some bolt. Some double tracks and multiple runways that we think that we can achieve some of that. The estimated cost for the conversion was thirty-four to forty-three million dollars. In the backdrop is the the cost of upgrading the tracks, depending on what it's used, was anywhere from a hundred and fifty million dollars to three hundred and fifty million dollars. If I remember the numbers correctly. Um, it's, it, it's an area that we're going to work with each community, the commissioner's office has. Really encouraged us to use a thing called the Village Partnership Fund Program to help work on. The both the trail and the areas around the trail, uh, focusing on the infrastructure act. And also, um, with the U S Department of Agriculture, USDA, on the rural development program. You know, community buildings, um, you know, that you're looking at a community center, looking at that program for grants and loans to plug in and be able to provide that connective tissue. I think Topson in this program has a real opportunity, um, to be a core destination point of this project. Um, and we think that there's a real opportunity. To build on that, connect to the A two K program that's going from Brunswick to Bath and then connect to the Eastern Greenway. And the other systems that are being developed, so it becomes a part of a destination, both for tourists and also, as we've found. For attracting young workers that are looking for an active recreational activity life. Um, we have been working with a, uh, topsome climate action planning committee, um. We have been participating, uh, in a process that helped, uh. Establish community priorities and ideas, um. Doing the vulnerability assessment, we're in the process of doing the greenhouse gas inventory. And we're, um, going to ultimately be involved in the development of that primary climate action plan for the community that will be presented to. Um, we could serve, help survey the community, we identified the significant vulnerabilities that the community faces. And that's a great picture of of the dam and the river. And the fact that a bunch of us probably remember when the bridge moved a little bit nineteen eighty-eight and. I've been waiting for a long time to actually replace it. And we've also started the key. Greenhouse gas emissions, and we've been identifying the areas, the key strategies that we can identify to reduce gas emissions on a local. Um. We also help the community a little bit with Pleasant Point Road, um. We identified a bunch of the work that had been occurring since two thousand fifteen, we've had a conversation with Mark about the concerns with the road system. Um, and then we identified some of the key areas, did some sidewalks with. With staffing and then ultimately with neighbors in the neighborhood. And, um. Conducted a number of community engagement set sessions. Uh, assisted with the development of the engineering R and B and ultimately led to selections to big on techniques on that, because I understand that they're working on the project as we speak. Maybe I'll, I'll stop there. And take questions.
Will you go back to the slide that had the housing opportunity program gaps analysis?
Okay.
Boy, pulling it up, I just was trying to decipher what it is and what the numbers. Kind of meant, and yeah, couldn't see before we got the paper, but now I have the numbers, I'm just looking at. Percent owned on the very left, it says less than twenty K, are we talking salary on the left hand side?
Sa- salary on the left hand side, for the most part, identified through the census. And we're about to ident, about to update those again with the American survey update, um, this. Supposed to be completed this December, and then we'll run these numbers again.
And what does the L M A stand for?
Uh, the labor market area, we built our analysis around labor market areas in our region.
Okay, so if I read this correctly, then. Somebody that's making. Twenty to thirty-five thousand in Brunswick, there's a hundred and seventy-five people that are. We could use housing for based on the workforce need, and I can do the same thing with the numbers all the way down.
And, and, you know, uh, Topson is large enough that we can actually go in and run those numbers specifically. Um, we, we know, we've done that work a little bit for Brunswick already, and we can do it.
Interesting thing to know. Uh, there's more people looking to own than that.
Yeah.
Or is, or is that, you know, one of those?
It's almost a product of the existing, um. The existing pattern that we have, that what breaks out to about seventy percent. Uh, ownership and and the rest rental.
Right.
Um, and and, you know, there's quite a bit more rental in the Brunswick area and the Bath area, but overall. Those numbers are what we have, and and I would point out, one of the questions that we have and why we're looking forward to updating the information. Is that Brunswick has added a lot of commercial rental property out in the Brunswick landing. We're really curious to see, we think that that's one, a long thing to at least handling the median income up rental market. And that we really need to begin focusing on the homeowner market as the next step, whether that's condos or single family houses or some combination.
I'd be curious to know what Topson is like as well, because we here. I live here, I see the prices of the houses, and you know, I, I think of my kids and, you know. All the generations of people that have kids right now, are their kids going to be able to afford a house in this town, or are they going to be priced out? And, well, that's so far future based, what about the kids now? What about kids that are just coming back from college that are living with their parents for a little bit, looking for a place to live and set roots?
Have, have a very difficult time.
Yeah.
Not only finding a house to buy, but finding a house to rent.
Or anything.
Or, or an affordable, at an affordable rate.
Yes.
And, you know, the. You know, the general sense is that they're, they're spending so much money on higher and higher rents. Then they're not probably saving enough money to the advice.
That's. What I say, and it's one of the, the facts that strikes me about Topson is that ninety percent of the residents work outside the town. Only ten percent of our residents actually work and live here. Um, what kind of community is that, and what are we drawing to it, and how do we make it more affordable, because Topson is growing? And there's things that are are happening in the public, but how do we? How do we service that labor force with something that can be affordable, knowing now after reading this? You know, people are willing to travel forty-five minutes, but what are they traveling for? Minimum wage, I don't know if they are not, but.
There, our, our housing opportunity group, the Five Rivers Group, is taking some of the first looks of that, although I have to admit that they focused on. Issues like short term rentals. Um, uh, A D U's and then began looking at zoning ordinance barriers restrictions and figuring out how to, how to. At least around the transit centers, make housing work better, but you've done a lot of that in your town center, uh. Zoning districts, so you're actually have taken some of the first steps.
Thank you.
You're, you're welcome.
Any questions? One of your comments has been, how does index computers? And I think what I've seen like in the last year is that the roads are really blocked up right here. Moves to north and south and west, so I mean, that's another cost to the ground to come into play as well, in terms of how you accommodate that increase traffic.
What, what, what we've asked in this thriving communities program in in developing the transportation is to try to build that first step, which is. An inventory. Of an understanding of what's going on in the pinch points, what analysis has made D O T already done, what does it tell us? Is what it's telling us makes sense and what we need to do to take that next step of analysis, or what do we need to take? That next step of analysis, try to figure out how to get cars off the road, how to get, you know, travel patterns so that people can use alternatives. And that's, you know, the, we, one of the discussions we had yesterday morning is the pinch points actually present an opportunity. To say, okay, maybe there's no more capacity at some of these road systems, and maybe we need to look at much harder at alternative.
With that being said, you mentioned B I W drawn sixteen counties, you don't have the density for a lot of these alternatives.
No, and and, well, it was interesting, something I hadn't realized that came up in the meeting the other day is how many new B I W workers are living out at the apartments in Brunswick Landing. And how we've really not set up to move commuters back and forth from landing to B I W, and so that's a whole new discussion you could get into. But that's perfect, it's it. Perfect.
It's unfortunate, we don't have significant mass transportation infrastructure in our town already to move people around and take cars off the road. I'm also being sarcastic right now.
I was hoping.
But it's going away. Yeah.
Other questions? Very good, this is great, I appreciate it.
Thank you, we just think of us always as a service, uh, we're here to help whenever we can. Thanks.
Well, I, I just thought of a question, you said earlier that we, you offer sixteen hours of time to each town, do we use that time?
You have.
Just want to make sure we're utilizing.
Yeah, no, you've done a good job of using that sixteen hours, I think we might have used more.
Yeah.
But that's okay, those things, we, we, we let it ebb and flow between the communities for projects that they need worked on.
Great.
And I just want to, Matt's been a great partner, uh, he's been available for consulting and answering questions and helping with other projects, and thank you for your work.
Thank you. All right, next time. Update from the Trailblazers. Victor Langel.
Yeah, so, um, actually, it's not the Trailblazers, and we're playing off the Meramey Trail. Um. And I, I, I'm going to just go through some brief backgrounds, just so everybody's on the same page, um. The. Well, it wasn't exactly a challenge, we're called the Meramey Trail Initiative, um, started this idea of creating a trail from, um. Topson to Garner, um, back in two thousand and seven, um, and. In twenty fifteen, um, four towns, uh, signed a interlocal agreement. Um, which formed basically the Meramey Trail Board of Supervising, which is. It's formed because we thought we were going to start building trails, we had the possibility of a short section enrichment that was on the end up. Um, work plan, um, and, um, and then eventually disappeared, but, um. So, so that, that board is essentially tasked with the, the, the chores of. Managing the design, construction and and maintenance of the trail on long term. Um, there's representatives from each town on board, um, there's two from each town basically. Um, and, um. So, um. As Matt has already pointed out there. Um, the, the, we, we started this project as a rail with trail. And we got, um. We realized that, you know, when we started it, that it was way cheaper to put the, the rail, that the trail on the rail bed. However, um. That wasn't a possibility at all, um, basically the way that the state laws were set up. So we worked on a rail with trail, uh, there's some real serious obstacles to that. Um, so we looked at alternatives, alternative. Um, so we looked at alternatives, alternative routes, et cetera. Um. You know, the best we can do was essentially a five to one ratio between putting it on the rail bed and doing an alternative, you know, that grow with trend. At, um, essentially what happened is, um, change of administration, a change of thought about how to use these unused rail lines. This lower road hasn't actually been used for any, um, paid service since. Um, the eighties, I forget the exact date, but eighty-six or something like that. Um, so it's, um. It's pretty much a totally unused rail line at this point. Um, there's no. Demand for freight service, hasn't been demanded for freight services a long time. The train, the Department of Transportation believes that there's probably not going to be any. Um, for a long time. And. So anyway, um, they. They allowed us or. I guess the Merribe Board of Supervisors petitioned them to, um, in, um, form a reality advisory council and that happened. The council ended up voting to say, um, that it should become an interim trail. And. So at this point, um. There's one more step that needs to be done, um. And that is for the Commissioner to introduce a bill to legislature that says. You know, we want to use this as an interim trail, um, meaning that we would reduce the rail, the rail, excuse me, and allow the trail to occur, um. The, um, the department's happy to see that happen. So we really believe that he's. They they could use the rails where it's actually the rail itself is actually in pretty good shape. Um, the rail bed, about fifty percent of the piece that we rebuilt, so. Um, the, um. To actually, even to put freight on there, it's, um. I think the cost is fifty-five million for ten mile an hour freight is about half the, um. Ties in many places, so, um. Anyway, um. And so we're we're expecting that to happen. Um, sometime in this next legislative session. Um, and we'll go in front of the Transportation Committee and if they agree with it, then we'll go through the whole legislative process. If that happens, we can start looking for hunting and start building the trail. Um. There are, as Matt has pointed out, there's opportunities for the village partnership program to build some sections of the trail in middle of towns. Richmond and Bodenham are certainly looking at that at this point. Bodenham's done a whole. Concept redesign of their walkability in their downtown, um, and the trail is a big part of that, so. And so. What's happening next is that, um, for us, uh, for the trouble is we're actually, uh, holding a series of community. Conversations gathering, we're gathering input from what communities want to see for this trail. Um, what kinds of facilities they like, what kinds of uses, uh, where they want to park, be able to access it. Not not that we can accommodate all these requests, but the idea is just to get the feedback so we can then start when we, you know, talk about designing it or, um, you know. What parts to go first even. Where's the, you know, where's the where people are interested in, um, at the most and, um. So anyway, um. They're happening in each of the four towns, um, Thompson's. Session, I should call it, um, is happening at the Thompson Public Library on October twenty-ninth at six o'clock. And. Um, since the library closes today, it can't last any longer than that. That could probably be about ten minutes to clean up the mansion and get out of there, so. All right, um, um. I'd be happy to entertain any questions. I I skipped a lot of stuff, but if you want. If you want more detail, I'm happy to fill it in.
I got a couple of questions. So. You just mentioned they're ripping up the tracks. That's certainly not how it was discussed during the R U A C.
Well. I mean, they may. They may leave the rail there and put some coat or something over it with a trail on it. The chances of that are probably pretty low because, I mean, how many times during that R U A C did it, did, um. Uh, Matt, um, Nate Moulton say, we could use that rail. So I think they're going to use it. Um. It's it's better to do that than try to pay for a new rail somewhere else. Um, I mean, reuse. Reuse, reuse, reduce, I mean, you know, uh. There's there's no point in, sorry, um. They've got active, they've got an active project to build rail in Arusta County. Um, they've got. You know, a company that actually wants to provide freight service up there. I, you know, anyway, so I I think it might, I think that's what's going to happen. That's my guess, the decision actually will be made by the commissioner, I think, um, because it's end dots right away. So they they'll decide, you know, um, whether that'll come up or whether it'll be covered or whatever.
Maybe certainly make it a lot harder to restore rail, that's for sure.
No.
Yeah, it will.
Why?
Because you're taking the tracks out, Victor. This was the entire part of the discussion with the R U A C was you would leave them, cover them with sand, and then when the train service resumes.
As I said, you have to take them up anyway. If you're going to put in.
Not everything, not everything.
Not well, not every single one of them, but you're gonna have to put up fifty percent of it. I mean, what's the difference?
This is crap, man. This is. The entire discussion we had with the R U A C was covering sand, and now you're talking about ripping them out.
That was actually not the decision.
Uh, if you want to take a look at the video, yeah.
I did.
All right.
Um, so, um, the other thing too is that. There's no demand for freight, freight, so. That's the lowest end. If you want to put in passenger rail, that all that rail comes up anyway. It has to be continuously welded rail to be be able to support passenger service.
For DOT, when I asked about light electric rail with a battery, they said you can't have that here because we don't have it in Maine. That is on the video. Exactly word for word.
Doesn't matter.
You don't need continuous track for battery, Victor.
Yes, you do.
No, you don't. There's no electricity going to the rail.
That that's not why you have a continuously welded rail. You have continuously welded rail because it's the smoothest ride. People are going to want to live or ride on a train that goes bang, 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 boom, 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 boom.
I do when I go to Boston, it's the same thing.
They have continuously welded rail.
Well, it still goes bang, bang.
Well. Imagine what it would be like if it wasn't.
I can't, because DOT will never allow it, so we'll never know, right?
Okay. So anyway, um. Anything else, sorry?
Uh, I mean, those those tracks haven't been used for how long?
Um. Well. There's been a couple of excursion trains in the late nineties and maybe early two thousand, um, but other than that, um, the last I know of was a, uh, kind of. Our freight service back in the eighties. So I, I mean. It it was used very infrequently since then, I mean.
And is there a reason why you don't want them ripped up?
I just, I don't know. I mean, my fundamental reason is that we're mortgaging my children's future, um, because we want to be like that. Uh. The biggest impact that this state is going to have to reduce our carbon footprint is not through cutting missions from power plants because we don't have any. If the only thing we can do is take cars off the road. That's the only thing that's going to have a major impact. That's what the governor's climate change plan says. It's what Climate Council has recommended. And here we are, taking away. One possible way of taking cars off the road because people are not going to be commuting. From Thompson to Augusta in February. It's not going to happen. As as much as you talk about active transportation, it's about going from one town to another to the farmer's market. It's not about going to work.
So covering them with sand. Is going to solve that because they still got to remove the sand, right?
Eventually, well, that's the thing though. I mean, what this is already passed. There's no going back at this point, even there, there's a term, what is it, trail until rail or whatever, inch and trail.
It has to go back to a rail.
That that's never going to happen. It'll never happen. I mean, it's just look at what's going on in We Beach right now. Um, it's lawsuits and money talk and they will.
I'm just trying to gauge the the likelihood. Of those tracks ever being used again after being covered with sand.
It won't happen.
So what's the point if you get rid of them or cover them with sand?
Because it was completely against what we discussed on the R U A C.
That's the only reason.
Well, I mean, legally, the trail ha- the rails have to be restored if.
If they want to use them again.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, like I said, that's going to get held up in court. In perpetuity and they will they will drive the state out, um, landowners next to the tracks if the train. But just if you recall, maybe about six, seven years ago in Brunswick. The Amtrak layover station.
Yeah.
That was dragged out for five years, I think, uh, because people bought a house next to an active trail line, a rail, uh, rail bed.
Would those same conditions happen if they were covered with sand? Would they still be held up in litigation for years and years and years to undo it?
Probably yes, because not just landowners at that point, but then you're having people who are advocating like the East Coast Greenway. They would probably lend their voice to a lawsuit saying this is a great way, you know, we want to keep this trail, that sort of thing. I mean, it the the point is the the votes already been taken. There were two of us against it, the rest were for. So now the only thing we can discuss is who actually gets to use this valuable piece of public infrastructure that we're planning on removing. Um, and what groups? My advocacy is for everyone. Everyone who can use, who uses a trail. The Thompson Trail Riders who are here, they let. Everyone use their trails, they maintain their trails, they let everybody go out there whenever they want to. Um, from cyclists to horseback riding, et cetera, and they don't ask for anything in return. So my. The thing that's stuck in my craw right now is what was on that slide earlier, which was said primarily non-motorized use. That doesn't work for me.
I'm just trying to get past the whole digging up of the rails because in my mind. Part of what I'm thinking about is when we're reading through the plan, there's the options of leaving the trail systems, but the cost to make those trails are so. Fast because you have to widen the roads, you have to put fences up so people aren't crossing tracks that are potentially being used. Versus removing the tracks and having an extremely wide path that everybody can use, um. It would, to me, seem that it would be wiser to remove the tracks so that you have that wide of a space in order to allow more uses.
But I think we kind of hung up on a moot point here. It doesn't, it doesn't matter at this point.
Also, just to clarify that, um, right away does vary quite a bit. Um, so there are parts that are quite wide, like ninety-six feet, I think, was the widest.
Yeah.
Um, there are places like the bridge over the Cat Hands, which is pretty narrow, um, and so, um. And 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 actually, if you're going to have a rail with trail, you'd have to actually build a second bridge.
Yeah.
It's pretty much what it came down to. It's not. You can't even handle leave or something off in this neighborhood. So, um, so, yeah, the the trail. Would probably not be along, I mean, anyway, um. Having the the rail bed used as a trail is is probably the easiest way to get this to actually happen. Um, and so, um, and but yes, there are sections that are plenty. The other, the other big cost for doing it, um, a ground with trails is that it goes through a lot of environmentally sensitive areas. A good portion of the trail in Bodenham goes through Marsh and, um, other, you know, environmentally sensitive. Um, and it's right on the. The Canavac River up in Gardiner. It's so close to the river that there really isn't much room to widen it. Um, so unless you move the road. So so, you know, um, so so anyway, the, um. There are sections though that are quite wide. There's some double track as Matt mentioned, um, and those could certainly be shared by every every user. Um, so. And and we could probably even the narrower section as long as we have the rules down to make sure that, you know. Nobody's pushed off the track.
But for me, what I guess what it comes down to is there's got to be a hybrid model, you know, like we have hybrids of everything. There's. There's probably sections of the track and and for cost because. Do we want something to recreate? Yes or no? And my vote is yes. I just, you know, trying to find the best. Most cost effective way, most environmentally sound way, you know, the the big win-win for everybody seems like there has to be a hybrid model where parts of the track. Are removed and utilized for. Said use and parts of the tracks can be covered and parts of them can we can just use the side of it, um. But the the big disdain is whether or not rail will ever get used there again and. I don't think it's, I mean, I've.
Yeah.
Looked here a long time and it's been a long time since I've seen trains on those tracks and. I'm not sure that it's going to happen in my lifetime again.
You need for 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 freight, you need somebody, um, a company that's moving a lot of stuff. It's very heavy. Aggregates, we have a a large, um, mine of some kind of tracks that would probably be a good use for it. Uh, that's not happening. Um, there aren't any really big, you know, big mines up there.
Right.
Um. The, um, the other thing for passenger rail is you need a population density. It's about twenty times what we have in this area. Um. To make that feasible, um, and we just, we just don't have that. And we're not going to have. We're not going to grow twenty times in the next, I don't know. Five decades or so. I mean, it's going to be a while.
Is it, is there opposition to having ATVs and horses on there right now?
Oh, yes, significant.
I think the the opposition, there are people who oppose it because. They don't feel safe on such a like like trail. Um, but again, I think it's it's going to. That's why we're interested in input from this. That's why the community sessions are happening. We've got to figure out where where people might want to use it for for both purposes. And then try to figure out how we design it so it fits both needs.
Yeah, because you know, I'll give you the case that I'm thinking about the trussel that goes underneath the bypass. Very narrow.
Yeah.
You can't put everything in there. I mean, imagine a walker and a biker coming through and then an ATB or a UTB. Or a horse trying to do the same thing to cross through that area. It's got to be monitored and that's going to add costs, you know, and that's why I think certain parts of the trail. Are more conducive for allowing these things, but there's some that we just might not be able to overcome unless. Additional costs are put out there for monitoring or policing or. Policing is the wrong word, but you know what I mean, like you're forcing this, that everything goes and you know, the the same goes for.
Yeah, but those but those sections fringe that particular tunnel. I mean, on the other side, is there really any ATV use there already? That would mostly be used for people who want to continue onto Brunswick on their bike path and ATVs aren't allowed on that, so.
Is there, there's ATV tracks that run across the tracks that you can connect with so that. The trails can come out and one come down the tracks and then go back into trails.
Yeah.
So there could be sections that could help link the current tracks up with each other.
Yes.
Without utilizing the entire duration of it all. I guess that's what I'm getting at in a hybrid model. Maybe the whole thing isn't UTV friendly, but there's certainly parts that we can work within.
Yes.
With everywhere so that we can interconnect trails, expand upon trails and actually have a little bit of riding space at any time.
Already, I I probably shouldn't say it was in public, but there is already use of ATVs along the rail rail line at this point, so. Um, but anyway, yes, um, there there are places where it would be useful. I I absolutely agree. And if there's enough car. I mean, if the car is wide enough and or the landowners, you know, don't mind, I I think we can, we can, um. You know, we can support that. I I'm happy with that, too. I I might might be, I mean, I think the basic concern is that there. There are a fair number of people who want to be able to operate this, but they're, you know, they're pushing baby carriages or baby joggers or something, you know, of that kind. And they're a little bit hesitant to have, you know, to have ATVs going right by them. But again, if it's wide enough, ninety-six feet, I mean, it'd be probably accommodate both. They do in Lisbon. I mean, distance trails have both, you know, so.
And you're going to have these four meetings in Bodenham, Richmond, Gardner and Thompson, you know. People need to be looking for a win-win. You know, to just say, well, I'm not, it might, it's not safe for my baby in a carriage, so that means we get better rights than someone who wants an ATV.
I I.
So so if I can finish my thought here, um, you know. A win-win that I could just think of the top of my head is one weekend day is for motorized, one weekend day is not. Then everyone wins and then, you know, maybe during the week do the same thing. So many days a week are. Are separate or some are mixed or whatever, but there's win-win options here that you don't just go, well, I'm a bicyclist and I don't want anything motorized. What happens to the people who want motorized and they don't have opportunity because someone higher up made this decision?
Well.
She said, look at what's best for all residents of Thompson, especially in the area incoming.
The decision will actually be made by the towns, not, I mean, so we get to decide the the through the board of supervisors, we get to decide. How, you know, how the trail is used, how the trail is constructed, what purposes it might be used for, whether it's paved or not. All those decisions are pretty much up to us. They're not going to be force fed to us as far as I know, um. Unless there's some obscure law that we have, we have to follow. But basically, I mean, so yes, that's one of the reasons why we're we're holding these meetings to try to get initial input into. Into how we people want to see it used, where they want to see it used for what, you know, et cetera, et cetera. That's a good idea of having alternate, you know, times when. Um, it's used for one purpose or another, um, maybe not the whole trail, but sections of it like that, you know, I don't know. I mean. There's a, there's a lot of options and so, all right, that's, uh, we're 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 at a very early stage. We probably got. A year or two before we actually have any money to actually do anything, so, um, this is just getting the conversation going. Um, we're really a long ways away from actually, you know, writing any rules or or constructing anything at this point, so.
I just think we have to work with people, you know, I I don't want Katniss Road in.
Yeah.
And there are bicyclists all the time who are riding two across and they shouldn't be, and I have to be six feet away from them and it's a curve. And it's things, so you know, having a trail would be really great. But at the same time, you don't want to favor one group over the other. That would be just my advice.
Yeah. Yeah, I my, it was my question or comment is that. I mean, as you're doing this, I mean, you should go find use cases where. You see what I call. the greatest possible use in terms of numbers of types of vehicles per se, uh, versus the ones that are more specific use and you know, so people at least visualize how it might impact this area. And, you know, how did you arrive at a situation where you could have basically allowed broader use? And, you know, what were the obstacles that both have come to make that happen?
Hmm.
So I, I think that, you know, as we're having these community discussions, it's just good to be able to have examples they can look at and do research on. Uh, yeah, we're, 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 we're actually at this point not sort of proposing anything. Because we really, this is again, the first, the first.
Yeah, you don't know what you don't know.
The first conversation really, as the who's interested in for anyone. And so, at the, at some point, we, we will have to start putting, you know, pen to paper, um, and say, okay, here's how we think, you know, this ought to be done to accommodate the best users. And that's where, you know, we get to the, okay, you know, sketch, you know, this section's gonna be this way and that section's gonna be that way. And that's a, that's a ways off field, but, but anyway, so that's, um, yeah, I, I, I agree. We need to do that. That is actually essential.
Thank you for your presentation.
I, I would just like also, I, I think utilizing that trail is important. I mean, it does nothing, it's state-owned right now, so it's not really public land. It's state-owned. We're looking for the permission to do, to use their land, basically. Uh, but just like for that section, because of the way it is, it's not a bike path in my mind, like we see in Brunswick or by the Highland Reds over here. It, it would be much more like a, a transportation road and on a transportation road, there are cars, there are joggers, there are cyclists, there are and everybody shares it. And this would be a situation in my mind that's similar to that, where we would have to find ways to accommodate. But in doing so, we also would have to find ways to, uh, monitor. Because anytime you put, if there's an extensive use, and especially with motorized vehicles in general, there has to be accessibility and monitor just because I was a kid once and I had a four-wheeler. You know, um, there's still kids out there with four-wheelers and kids are kids, you know, and young adults are young adults. They have, they have different energy and a different passion, so.
Yeah.
Um, it's always going to exist, but I mean, I think that's also something that hasn't been brought up, but what are we gonna do to patrol that area? Uh, because it's miles long.
Yeah. Well, it's, it's actually there, I mean, they're different. We can really think about it in different sections. There's stuff that's in very much in town. It's gonna be used by, probably used by a different set of users than the overall sections, so. Um, again, that helps with the, you know, making sure everybody can use, use it for, you know, the best purpose, so, um, yeah, it. You're right, I think we're.
It's, it's too early to really even talk about anyway, but.
I don't have the answers. I, but what we're looking forward is hopefully maybe, you know, through these conversations, people come up with suggestions that we can incorporate and then eventually, you know, the, the board and the town, et cetera, can come up, you know, can say, this is how we wanna how we wanna do this, so.
Well, it's been a long time coming, so it's, thank you for bringing it up and, and working so diligently for so long. Um, hopefully this, we don't stifle that work and we can continue.
Well, the, the other thing too is that this is finally possible because we actually can use the rail bed. I mean, without that, it's just the costs are just so enormous that it's not gonna happen.
Right.
That's pretty much it's been happening, so.
Where, where are these rail beds located?
Oh, um, it's pretty much, um, you can think of twenty-four, Route twenty-four.
Yeah.
It's pretty much near that, some, all the way through. It crosses twenty-four and Bodenham. It crosses, um, one ninety-six, uh, if you, uh, um, or goes under one ninety-six.
Oh.
Um, uh, there's a tunnel there, um, so it pretty much starts, it starts at the one ninety-six bridge across the Andrews Garden. Um, there's a rail bed alongside of the, the road there. That goes underneath the road. Goes through, um, the end near, crosses Tedford Road, that's that way. Um, and then, uh, it, it pretty much stays on that side of twenty-four until you get to Cat Hands, near the Cat Hands, uh, Reserve. Uh, it crosses the road, the Cat Hands Road there, um, goes over a bridge over the Cat Hands and then follows the Cat Hands River all the way pretty much to Bodenham. I mean, in fact, some places of it are right on the Cat Hands River. It's one of the nicer sections, could be one of the nicer sections of the trail in Tops. Um, and, um, and then, you know, it crosses, it goes through downtown Bodenham, you know, railroad tracks right there. And you go over the bridge, um, it goes right through downtown, uh, Richmond. Uh, it's actually not on the waterfront, but just the hill. We're right through all where the businesses are. Um, and then it, it's downtown water, uh, uh, Gardner. Um, and then the Kennebec River Rail Trail, um, connects, uh, right there as well in Gardner. So it's, the, when the, this trail's built, when the eighty K trail is built, um, we'll be able to go, we'll be able to go from, you know, Augusta all the way to Bath, so we call it the capital of the coast, Carter. And actually, um, there's a lot of momentum behind the Casco Bay Trail, which goes, um, which actually kind of is a triangle, um, from Portland to Auburn, Lewiston, back down to Tops and Brunswick, uh, and then back, um, along Route one, the Route one corridor more or less, um, to Yarnet, um, and then Portland. But that, um, if that connects, then that's that connects essentially almost to this trail, um, because they both come to downtown, um, Tops and and with our existing bike path, we can be connected. Um, and so we have a, we're actually kind of a uh, Tops and Brunswick are kind of a hub for these active transportation borders. I didn't, I can forgive you the active transportation map, but the, there are certain, um, um, arterials, we're calling it. Um, and so these, these trails are intended to actually connect to other trails. So, um, walking trails, they, they will already connect to a number of preserves. Um, so you'd be able to, you know, walk a ways on this trail and connect to, um, ones that toss and land trust preserves on the Cat Hands. Um, you can get ahead of Todd Park in downtown, um, without having to go on the road. Um, so, you know, there's, it, it has some, so, you know, some, some nice interconnections and, um, and, 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 and there's enough of them that's really hard to figure out exactly how I might use. So we kinda have to, you know, get people's input and um, we'll, we'll have, our plan is that this community session, they have, they basically have a general map of, of where the trail would be. And people can start saying, here's, you know, how I might use it or here's what I want to access and stuff like that.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks very much.
One last thing I might add here, um, back in December of twenty-one, when we first came up with our resolution, um, for multi-use or rail and trail, you recall, uh, you and Marie, that we voted unanimously for that resolution. Um, that language didn't make it into the resolution that eventually went to DOT. Uh, the DOT, uh, resolution that was sort of a combination of each towns to form the RUIK was spec- very specific about the language. It did not mention rail and trail, uh, or anything in there, so that was stripped down. I guess I'm happy to hear that we are once again considering different types of uses, including motorized. Um, when we first were presented, uh, or when this request for a resolution for the RUIK formation was first given to us, we had Jeremy Clucci from Bodenham here, who was, uh, talking about how great it would be to have a truly multi-use trail, including, uh, motorized use. And all throughout the RUIK, uh, I would say probably ninety-five percent of, of the people who were both on the committee, uh, and who called in, um, were very much against motorized use, including Mr. Clucci, so I'm I'm happy to hear that that's once again on the table. Um, there are actually a couple of people in this room, who I believe have actually approached the president of TTR and said, I'm fine with having snowmobiles during this month and that's it. Uh, so clearly there's a lot of communication that needs to continue happening here, um, and we can't just be glad-handed essentially by saying, yes, we'll include everybody, because that's not how this has happened so far. Um, so I'm looking forward to the event on the twenty-ninth. I hope everyone will be there so we can have further discussion on this. That's what I got.
That's great. Great, thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is public comment.
I thought, I wanted to make a comment that might include the director from the pub, but I see he's going out of the room. Yeah, I didn't, I'm, I'm checking out, we, uh, live at Tony Bird Avenue. Excuse me. To Brookside, that was my older address. I'm so sorry, I don't know where that came from. Um, uh, yeah, I wanted to ask him for a little bit of clarification on what he was talking about with the, um, Tops and as a hub of the transportation plans that he was talking about. Um, so maybe you get a chance to do that, it's a lot of time. But I would to comment also on the, um, proposed, uh, lower trail. I am a bicyclist and a cross-country skater. And I would say on behalf of the Tops and Trail Riders that they are courteous and extremely helpful. But I think courteous is the real word that comes to my mind. When I'm out skiing, these guys are as nice to deal with as could be. They deserve consideration.
Hmm.
At the same time, I think about my friend who's in her eighties, suffers from a degenerative disease. She is able to ride a recumbent bicycle, not a, not an upright bicycle, but she's still out there riding. And somebody like that is frail and fragile on the trails. And probably cannot deal with a irresponsible ATV driver. Um, I have a second experience actually with the Down East Sunrise Trail, which is far down east from us. Um, and there too, interestingly, um, I, I bicycle on it, but the, um, the ATVs are really very considerate. What they do is they slow down when they're coming near a bicycle, they slow way down. And that's really helpful. You're not dealing with gravel kicked up into your face and all that kind of stuff. So I think, I mean, I think it's really worth considering carefully um, how the trails can be shared, considering moms with babies in their buggies, considering the eighty-year-old lady who's on a recumbent bicycle because she is not able to ride anything else. Um, and, and so forth and so on, but I think, I think bearing in mind the fact that the trail riders, um, have really been, I think, good citizens and considerate in what they've done. So, I mean, I think, um, and the fact that the, the right of way is as wide as it is, I think in some places really leaves opportunities open. And so that's, that's my only comment.
Thank you. Any online? Correspondence?
Uh, I received correspondence from one resident who, um, heard us talking about recording meetings and said that they were having difficulty listening to them as well. So I just responded and said, we'll be discussing that in detail, um, at our next, uh, waterflock meeting if they wanted to attend it, but.
Great. All right, adjustments to the agenda. We have nine and set calendar. Item one, approval of the minutes of a regular select board meeting, September nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two, with a motion.
I make a motion, we accept the meetings as presented.
So.
Will you second it? All in favor? Item two. A, approval to open the polls at seven AM on November fifth, two thousand twenty-four for the state and main general election and municipal annual election. B, approval to open and process absentee ballots on the following days. Uh, October twenty-ninth, thirtieth, thirty-first and November first, as needed, beginning at ten AM. C, approval to appoint Linda Dumont as warden for the state election. Approval to appoint Steve Littlefield as moderator and Sam Eaton as deputy moderator for the municipal election. And E, approval of the registrar to hold extended hours until seven PM on October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four for the purpose of voter registration and absentee voting. We'll take that as a great, carry motion.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Will you second it? All in favor? Motion carries, thank you. Item twenty-four seventy-eight, consideration any appropriate action on signing a warrant for the municipal annual town meeting of November fifth, two thousand twenty-four. For motion for that?
We need to. They just moved the warrant.
Yeah, that's. We in motion, so. Look at someone here.
So moved. Second.
Look at second here, all in favor? Motion carries.
For, for Patty, thank you, probably better call, but it was the motion.
Yes, it was two. I think Marie was first.
Yeah, you put Marie for the second.
My finished business nine, old business nine. Onto new business, twenty-four dash seventy-nine, consideration of any appropriate action on the letter of support from the town of Brunswick Warming Center rehabilitation grant application.
So we, we're having meetings since, I think, July, coordinated by Tedford Housing. Um, the idea was to try to find a place for a warming center in the mid-coast area. Uh, last year it was hosted by the Gathering Place on Union Street. They found it interfered too much with the regular operations that they didn't wanna have it again this year. Uh, so there was a group of, uh, staff members from the mid-area municipalities as well as various nonprofits. They looked at potential sites, certain ones were suggested throughout the, uh, Bath, Brunswick, Tops and area. The only one that ended up being really identified as possibly working is the former Seventh Day Adventist. Um, I think it was a youth clothing center on Union Street in Brunswick. And they've now closed that, but they were willing to lease it. So a um, grant was applied for with the state for a warming shelter there this winter, which was granted. Uh, so there will be a warming shelter, or at least this winter, uh, but the building is for sale. Brunswick's indicated, um, that they might be interested in buying the building to have it be a more permanent warming center. And so Tedford Housing reached out and asked if the other communities would be willing to, uh, supply a letter supporting Brunswick's uh, possible grant applications to try to buy that building. And so that's what you have for you tonight is a letter indicating Tops and support for Brunswick's grant to buy that building as a potential warming center.
Any questions?
Is that required for the grant?
I don't think it's required, but it usually helps give you extra credit. It was more, it's a regional effort as opposed to a single.
Are you talking about the one that's across from the new police station, this, um, as a street?
No, it's more across from Hannaford. So it's, um, it's a building that gathering, like, you, you know, where the soup kitchen is.
Yeah.
So the gathering place is there and this building is, I think, like, maybe attached to the gathering place building, but I think it's not attached, it's right beside it.
Got it, okay.
Fair motion.
I move that we go ahead and provide a letter of support for Brunswick's grant application for a warming center.
Same.
It works. All right, move to second, all in favor? Motion carries. And the last item tonight, twenty-four dash eighty, consideration of any appropriate action on the opponent to the sewer district board trustees.
Um, I just wanna say that I was present for, uh, Mr. Stuart Kay's interview. He's an amazing uh, man, has a lot of experience in water and sewer, is actually in our, our audience here today. And, uh, we, you, uh, unanimously were supporting him during the interview. And so I make a motion that we appoint Stuart Kay to the Sewer District Board of Trustees.
So. Will you second it? All in favor? Motion unanimous. Congratulations. Thank you very much. Yes, I need a motion.
I make a motion to adjourn this meeting?
In the second, it all feels.